All right, Mr. Dalton, let us on the clock.
For the citizens of Texas, United States of America, and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On Texas side, the Constitution is deep, Texas on the state, under God, one indivisible.
All right, and as I say in every meeting when we get done to that point, the rules of the Coram Erner effect. Next thing is citizens' comments. Do we have any?
Yes.
Nightshell? Going once, going twice? Okay. Citizens' comments are closed for the night. That's a first. Usually somebody has to say something. Is everybody just being quiet tonight? All right, next thing, 5.1, consider approval of the June 23, 2020, city council meetings. I'll entertain a motion to approve those minutes. I've got a motion. Do I have a second?
Mayor, I'll second that.
I've got a motion and a second. Is there any discussion on those minutes? If not, all in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
So that unanimous? Moving on to 5.2, consideration, or excuse me, considerable of July 21, 2020, special city council meeting minutes. I'll entertain a motion on that one. All right, I've got a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
I've got a motion and a second. Is there any discussion on that one? If not, all in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
So that one unanimous. We'll move on to 6.1. Presentation by Mr. Chris Cooney representing Teague, Nail, and Perkins, followed by discussion and action regarding final determination of sanitary sewer line route and construction bid process for a sanitary sewer line for the General Business District generally located on State Highway 205 north of Villa Tuscana to FM 550/Highway 205 intersection. Mr. Cooney? Would you like to come up and turn the mic on and give us a presentation, sir?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Council. I'm pleased to be here again. My name is Chris Cooney. I'm a principal with Teague, Nail, and Perkins. Our corporate office is in Fort Worth, and we also have an office in Heath, Texas. If you recall, back in the late spring, you guys hired our firm to conduct a study. It was basically twofold. The first part of the study was to look at options to serve the commercial properties within McLennan-Chisholm, specifically those to the, what we'll call, the east of Sonoma Verde, coming over to Highway FM 550, and then also what it would take to serve those properties from Sonoma Verde and Villa Tuscana to the, basically to the east, continuing on all the way over as far as we could conceivably go. We went through the design process. We did surveying. And one of the real issues was, we were concerned, as you may recall the discussion, there's a large transmission gas pipeline that's owned by Kinder Morgan, and we were concerned that that pipeline was going to be in our way to provide a gravity route down 205, along 205. So the very first thing we did is we did a subsurface exploration and investigation. And we actually went and uncovered that pipe, got elevations, and were able to determine the exact depth and where we were going to propose to cross it. The good news is, the pipeline, as it turns out, is not in the way. We will be able to go that route, which is the most cost-effective route. And it's going to, again, will save the city and/or the developers that build the line considerable dollars. I have several drawings here that I brought. Shelley, this first one is the actual, the construction plans that we've prepared. Can you go to some of the previous PDFs? And I'm not going to bore you guys with a lot of, no, there should be, are there some other, there should be another PDF that's, there's... We're not on there? Yeah, that's actually the plans that we prepared. Well, let me do, let me explain, because I, in the essence of time, and again, I can stay here all night, or if you need me to stay afterwards, I can answer more questions. We looked at eight different routes as we were trying to explore what the most cost-effective way to serve this area. The areas, and we looked at routes that included going down 205 and pick up all the commercial property, turning, if you will, from, at the Sonic intersection, going under 205, and continuing down FM 550, the back end of Sonoma Verde, and coming in through the property there and directly into that lift station. And we looked at that scenario. It was very, very expensive because the cuts were basically bucking grade where you're on a gravity line, and you've got the ground coming up the other way. We had some cuts that were in excess of 45, 50 feet. And when you have cuts that deep, it's just extraordinarily expensive. So what we, in looking at all the different options, we basically came down, after we drew them up, we actually went out and contacted three different contractors that we've worked with to gift them, to give us some preliminary pricing. We had a pretty good idea of what we thought, but they basically verified what we thought, that there were really two options that are the best options for the city. We really think the base option is going to be the one that's going to probably be the best. But what we've done, after consulting with Lisa, we went ahead and we've prepared construction plans for what we're calling Option A, the base bid, and then Option B, which would be another route. Now, if you'll go back, Shelley, and if you'll look on your, the sheets that I gave you guys, there's two sheets. There's one that says the east route. The other one is the one that is the one that says the overall sewer layout plan. Do you have that one, if you unfold it? Can you go back, Shelley, to the beginning? If you can't, okay, I'm sorry. Yeah, just go back to the beginning. It's the, basically, the second sheet is the one that they're looking at. No, keep going back. One more. Well, I'm glad I brought the handouts. So basically, you see the two different routes. There's one that's in yellow and one that's in green. And the one that you see that's in green, basically, that ties into the existing manhole at Villa Tuscana. And then it runs, it runs across Villa Tuscana and then comes and crosses Highway 205. We collected the Tech dot plans, and so we know that we're below their proposed improvements, so that's not a conflict. We come across, in the line that you see, the green line runs actually just outside of the right-of-way. And we've got the new right-of-way acquisition that Tech dot is going to, has been requesting for the different property owners. And we're placing it, we're suggesting we place that outside of that right-of-way so that you'll never have to move it, and we don't have to worry about any kind of interference with Tech dot or anything that they're doing. The main property owner that would be affected is Mr. Pallani's property and Mr. Whittle's property. We've already talked to them. They're both very excited about the opportunity to have sewer, so I don't think getting an easement from them will be an issue. Plus the fact that where we're proposing to run it would be any type of building setbacks and landscape easement, so it won't negatively impact their property in any form or fashion. So that's Option A, and if you'll see it, if you follow it all the way over to the west and then down, we can basically carry it all the way almost down to Cattle Bear and Drive, Gravity. And at that point, we could pick up the Sonic. The Sonic, and what we propose is that this line be built. And then from that point, you let the other developers get from their property to this line, to this trunk line. And all of this green system is basically a gravity line. And it's a 12-inch line. It'll handle all the capacity that's necessary for the, for those commercial properties. We also are looking to bid, the second, the alternate bid is the yellow line that you see. And the only reason we are looking at that, back to the south. And so you typically, obviously, you want to put your sewer in the lower, you know, the lowest place. It minimizes your cut. And so looking at that, we would follow, we'd actually go right along Chisholm Crossing 4, make the turn, and come along Cattle Bear and Drive. So we're proposing that we go ahead and bid both options, see where they come in. And again, the fact that doesn't quite get over there, but it would actually be in a lower elevation, would allow still the same amount of people, we believe, to serve in there. So it's kind of our, again, our recommendation that we bid both, and we've prepared plans for both those options.
So the green and the yellow are the basic and the alternative?
Yes, sir.
The secondary?
Yes.
Which, which is which? The green is...
The green is the base bid, and the yellow's the alternate. And again, it won't matter. I mean, the contractors don't care.
Sure.
Now, what you don't see in this plan view is every 500 feet, we'll have a manhole. And at each of those manholes along the routes, either route, we'll have stub outs for the commercial properties, and stub outs that can go under 205 and pick up over 205. But most likely, you'll only need to cross 205 one time, and that would be at the intersection of 550 and 205 to pick up anything that's on the north side of 205 that's commercial. Lisa mentioned to me that there's a winery that's looking to come in. We think that we could get this system in place, assuming that you authorize us to move forward with bidding and work out how it's to be paid for between the developer and the city or whatever relationship, that probably in six to nine months, we could have this in the ground so that the winery could actually connect to it if that was the desire of the council.
Yeah, because that, that particular one you're mentioning, it's going to be, this is the problem.
Right, yes, sir. Uh-huh. And so we were looking if we could actually run it on the other side of the street, but we've got driveways to cross, and we still have to cross the gas line.
Right.
So we think a bore, another bore underneath 205 would be the most cost-effective way to serve them. Okay? Then the second, the second sheet that you have basically is the line that would run to the east to pick up the existing commercial properties and the, you know, go by the old city hall. I know that the audience is just fascinated by the sewer presentation. Basically, because we have to cross, the only way that we're going to be able to serve those areas, as I mentioned to you when we first talked, is we're going to have to build a lift station that would be constructed on the east side of Hackberry Creek. It's just, we can't get deep enough. Basically, we can, we can construct a gravity line from Villa Tuscana, again, to the east, all the way to the existing commercial property where it borders with the cemetery, which is a pretty logical place to stop. I don't think the cemetery really needs sewer. But along the cemetery property under Brushy Creek, there would be a forced main and a lift station that would be constructed. It won't be a huge lift station, not anywhere near the size of the lift station that we built for Sonoma. It'd be a small package plant, probably run in the neighborhood of $125,000 for that plant. And with that plant, you basically can see that that gravity line then goes all the way back. We can extend it all the way past the church, the Baptist church. And should be able to pick up even the mechanic's building if they're, if they desire to connect. As well, we will have the manholes that would extend across it every 500 feet, so as we need to pick up other properties across the highway, we can do that. Now, we have not prepared final plans for this section, because I didn't, that was not my charge, but we told you we'd kind of come up with an overall plan so that as you plan for the city and as people are interested in connecting or constructing, this is basically the roadmap of how they would get there. So really, at this time, we are, we're prepared to, we have the plans prepared and specifications. We're ready to go out to bid. And I think, I think the act on it tonight was to find out what the procedure was, how you, how the council wants us to proceed. And we actually, there's two different ways we can do it. The first option, of course, would be to bid it as a public project, as a city McLennan-Chisholm project, advertise in the local papers, prepare all the documents per the local government code, and receive bids, and then we would, we'd hold a pre-construction meeting and so forth. And then, once the bids were received, again, you're under no obligation to accept. You can reject any and all bids. And we'll make sure that that's clear in the process if they were to come in over, way over budget. And we would also put in there a timeframe to allow, we would ask the contractors hold their prices for a period of time, maybe as much as, you know, usually 90 days is the typical time, but we've done them as long as 120, 150 days. If you get too far out there, the prices tend to go up because they've got to hold their prices and with their suppliers. So we, there's kind of a balancing act there. But I think 120 days wouldn't be unreasonable. And then that would give the council time to decide what you want to do, how you could participate with the developers, and so forth. That's option one. The other option would be to contact and work with either Mr. Whittle or Mr. Pallani and talk to them about having them bid this as a private project. Then there's no obligation, again, there's no obligation on the first part of the city, but the bidding process is a little less cumbersome. It would allow us, as your engineer or consultant, to contact contractors that we'd want to bid. We really can't do that as a, as we're representative of public. It needs to be more of an open and fair deal. But we could contact contractors. We know they're active in the area, that we've seen good pricing, and really work hard with the developer to come up with a bid. And the same thing, once they establish the numbers, we could come back to the council and to whatever, again, whatever the council decides, EDC, however you're going to participate, if any, you could decide at that time, and we could present you with those numbers. So there's really two different ways you can go, and we're happy to proceed either way. From our standpoint, it really doesn't matter.
Any questions?
Yes, ma'am. Basically, the smallest, the smallest pipe that you typically see run in a municipality these days is an 8-inch. Some cities will allow 6, but an 8 is typically kind of the minimum size. And an 8-inch will certainly be large enough to carry the capacity. But the larger diameter pipe that you use, the flatter slope you can lay that pipe on. On an 8-inch pipe, your minimum slope is 0.4%, which is only 4 tenths in 100 feet. That sounds really flat. But a 12-inch is 0.2%. So you can run it much, twice as far before you come out of the ground with a 12-inch. And the cost difference between an 8 and a 12 is essentially the cost of the pipe. They have to dig the same trench. There's a little more embedment. So you're looking at a difference in the pipe costs, which may be, you know, anywhere from $2 to $5 a linear foot. So for the ability to get it all the way over there, to be able to serve all those properties with gravity, we deemed that it was wise to go ahead and go with a 12. And we do that in a lot of cases, even though an 8 is all you need for the actual volume. Does that make sense? Well, because we had, it's a combination. In a lot of the interior parts, it's 8, but some of the long runs and some of the mains, it's actually 12, where it actually goes into the, to the... And that's, that's a great question. But we also had pretty good fall getting from, from the entrances of Sonoma all the way down to the lift station, because we, you know, that, that lift station is about 20 feet deep, so we were able to, you know, gravity it all that way. But again, an 8-inch would handle more, be more than adequate to handle that capacity, even at the minimum slope.
Mr. Cooney, how tied are we to the expansion of 205? Which needs to come first? Or would we be better off to get our stuff done first before they start the expansion? Or would it be something that we did in coincidence?
It's a, it's a great question. I think, really, it doesn't matter. From our standpoint, that's why we went ahead and put it outside of the requested right-of-way. You know, the property owners have already received their request from Tech dot under where, what property they're either going to condemn or they're going to purchase. And so we set it outside of that right-of-way so that really the only coordination that we'll need with them, obviously, we want to be good neighbors, but is the coordination of getting underneath 205. And again, we pulled their plans, and we've used their cross-sections and their storm sewer and all their utilities. So it really doesn't matter. I mean, you could put it in now without any problem. You know, the way the state law works, you can run sewer lines in Tech dot right-of-way. Tech dot right-of-way basically has a provision where you can run public utilities within the right-of-way. But the problem is, if you, if we were to put it in now before that was acquired, the city that, or whoever owns that utility, when they widen, they can, they can not only request, but they can force you to move it outside of that right-of-way. So that's why we didn't even look at that option. And, you know, granting the easement, again, and talking to the property owners, they were very agreeable, and I don't think there's going to be a problem getting that easement.
Now, Will, with folks, so would you mind explaining to me again the difference between the base option and the alternate, alternate option? Why the base option is more preferred than the...
I don't know that it is more preferred. They both basically will serve the same properties. The base option, the green option, that's running along 205, if you can picture it and if you think about it when you drive by there, the ground from 205 falls away from 205 all the way down to Brushy Creek. So even though it's gravity, we're going to be at a higher elevation at the front of the property than we would be at the back of the property. Now, most of those commercial developments, they're going to have to build up anyways. And so we felt like we're about 8 feet deep, 10 feet deep along that route. Should be plenty of depth for them to be able to serve all their property. But if you've got it in the back, then it would be a, actually be a longer run, but a shallower run. So for the developer, it might be less expensive. And for the construction cost, it might be a little less expensive because you're not quite as deep as you carry that area. Quite frankly, my opinion is, is that whatever the cheapest, the least expensive option is, that's the one you need to go with because they basically both serve the same amount of property.
And will the residents of Chisholm Crossing face more that live around along that route to be able to...
That would be something. That is one advantage. If you were wanting to let them connect, they were, there would be capacity. That would be available to them. Obviously, one of the things that we probably need to discuss with the council is some sort of provision that, which is common in most cities, that if a sewer is nearby, you can either force them to connect to it or you can give them the option. It's really up to you. But in Rockwall, for example, if a city participates in a sewer, a resident is required to connect to that, to that line. I don't know that you guys want to go down that road. That is entirely, obviously, your choice. But that would be something that would be available for those particular residents. Those on the other side of the street would be a little more difficult. We'd have to get an easements and, you know, crossing property, and that'd be a pretty, pretty difficult challenge.
Chris, I've got a question for you, actually two. Just from a, from a business owner's perspective, does it make any financial, is there a financial benefit to the base one versus the alternate one, or are they going to pay about the same amount?
They're going to probably pay about the same amount.
Okay. And then what about, like, the vineyard property crossing? I mean, you've got a lot more line to run going to that alternate.
Well, again, that, I think that at some point, what I, my recommendation, just having been involved in this, you know, in different capacities, I think that the, what, what the council would need to do is go ahead and establish what you're going to do as a base, as a minimum. Not, I don't mean to conflict you with my base deal, but, you know, come up with a trunk line that will serve those properties. If there's a cost to connect to it for some of the commercial beyond the line, that's just kind of the cost of doing business.
Okay.
Yes, that, the bore, you know, a bore underneath 205 will be expensive. But it's a lot less expensive than having to go all, you know, parallel down 205. And probably in the long term, a lot less expensive than the system that they're going to have to put in for a commercial property, so... But we would put a manhole there, again, and we'd do what's called stub out, where we bring the line all the way to the right-of-way so that all they have to do from there is make the connection and bore across 205 and get it to their property. But again, EDC or city, you may say, hey, that's something, let's go ahead and throw that in the bid. Let's see what it costs, and maybe you have the money to do that. I don't know. That's, that's certainly your prerogative. Now, I will say that on the, one of the things that I wanted to point out is because we're challenged with the depth of everything in our grades, the property on the very, very far end of the, over by Brushy Creek on the other side to the west of Sonic, that can be served by the, both of these lines. But probably what will be required is that those businesses may have to construct what's called a grinder system, a grinder pump. It's a little mechanical pump that goes in the ground, comes in a pre-cast pit. They cost about $5,000. And then they basically would pump to this gravity system. But they would, they would, they're used all over the country. We're using them in golf course communities. We're using them down in the hill country. They use them in basements. And for a commercial application, the retail type development you're going to see, it's a lot less expensive than trying to maintain a septic system. And the nice thing is, the owner's responsible to maintain that, not the city. But you've given them a place to get it to, and it would, it prevents the city from having to build a large lift station down in that area. I just don't think that's, that'd be economically justified for the city to participate in that. But Sonic, we believe that, based on our surveys, the base should be able to connect either one of these systems in gravity with that, even the grinder system. But as you go further west and closer, again, to the creek as it falls off, that may be something that those property owners would have to, have to do. But we would write that, again, we'd provide you with a draft ordinance that you could implement so that it's, you know, level across the, across the board.
Any other questions?
So between these two, these two lines, between the green line and the yellow line, which would be the preference for long-term preventative maintenance?
They're both about the same, quite frankly. Yeah, they're both, have the same minimum slope. The green line may be a little less because there's fewer manholes. But, you know, these systems, you shouldn't have any issue with these for, you know, 25, 30 years. I mean, there may be something that clogs them from time to time, but in terms of the longevity, they'd be very, they're all gravity. There's no, no lift stations to contend with. They're installed properly, which we've been, obviously oversee the inspection and the construction. They'll, they'll be there for a long time. Should be very, very, very few maintenance issues on that particular system.
Any other questions? Do we understand everything enough to entertain a motion to move forward with a...
I just have a question to our executive session.
What about it?
I was going to relate to the...
If we needed to go in there and discuss it further? That's why I'm asking?
Yeah.
Do you want to go in there and discuss it further?
Yes, sir.
All right. Well, at this point, it is 6:59. I didn't say 8:59. I'm looking at military time. So it's 6:59. We are going to... Sir? Yes, sir.
Are there other items on the agenda to go into executive session on? We can either be, or announce them all now, or do them all at one?
Right. Okay, yeah.
Okay.
All right. We're going to go into, it's 6:59, or actually, it's 7 o'clock now. We're going to recess into executive session under 7.1 in accordance with Texas Government Code 551071. Consultation with the attorney to seek advice about a matter in which the duty of this attorney to the city council under the Texas Districtary Rules of Professional Conduct of the State Bar of Texas clearly conflicts with the Texas Open Meetings Act regarding final determination of sanitary sewer line route and construction bid process for the sanitary sewer line for the General Business District generally located at State Highway 205 north of Villa Tuscana to FM 550/Highway 205 intersection and 7.2 recess into executive session in accordance with Texas Government Code 551071. Consultation with the city attorney to seek advice on a matter in which the duty of this attorney to the city council under the Texas Districtary Rules of Professional Conduct of the State Bar of Texas clearly conflicts with the Texas Open Meetings Act regarding implementation of a bi-weekly city administrator's update. We're now in executive session. All right, guys. Let's go to the background.
So you guys are proposing to do the fire session first, right? Just to make sure that. So you guys are proposing to do the fire session first, right? Just to make sure that. So you guys are proposing to do the fire session first, right? Just to make sure that. Okay. Very good. I have, I need to know if you're involved in the, what are you, uh, what's the? So look, I'm saying. Sure. I'm, I'm, I was always. Yeah. So. And I made a, I worked with, I did, um, so a lot of time, yeah, I, I think I was, um, but, uh, you know, that, well, I'm, I'm, I'm definitely just wanted to, you know, um, stop. But we've done most of the 70s and it's kind of the, we built sewer system. We've got sewer system in, in 2000, in, in, oh, yes, 2000, 2005. And it's a front line and all, but it's up to somewhere, we're all getting, like, so. Well, and there's, you guys, there's some, so, um, I, 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 I,
So, um, I appreciate you here. You're very helpful. And just, um, I'm glad to be here. It's, um, 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 it's,[1445.18]
And so, he's a massive asset to me, and he started working for me about four years ago. And then, so when we get a call, it gets dispatched out to a truck. Our truck, one of our closest cities is about six and a half miles from here. So, it's a locally-based truck. And also, the animals that are picked up here will be kept at our facility in Fayette until Friday. Then on Friday, they're transferred to our main facility, which is between Salina and Pilot Point. So, the truck gets on scene. First thing we do is we secure the animal, make it safe, so it can't get hurt and it can't hurt anybody else. Once we do that, all our trucks have microchip scanners. It's going to be scanned for a microchip. Obviously, we're going to look for a tag and obvious stuff. If we find anything, we're going to contact the owner. Our mission and our goal is to get it home. We do not want to take it to our facility, period. It's safer for the animal, it's safer for my staff, it's better for everybody if it goes home. Also, we don't charge you anything. There's no fee for that, and we take it right back to your house, right to your front door. If we can't make contact with that, or if the animal's injured, we're going to transport it to our facility and try to help the animals best we can. If it's a broken limb, we're going to get it to the vet so it can get set. In the beginning, it'll be a simple splint, because that's the least expensive. Then if the owner has contacted, then we'll look at a more advanced surgery if needed. Another common call, especially in cities where you're building homes that are subdivided properties with shared fence lines, we have a lot of barking and nuisance calls on the animals because the houses are relatively close to each other. The dog doesn't understand that here's his yard, that's someone else standing six feet away from him. He doesn't understand that he can't bark at that person. And a lot of times, we have to go have conversations about different remediation methods, like bark collars, and they can be Centronella-based, they don't have to be the electrical type. There's lots of ways you can help your animal. There's little treehouses that put off a pulse that makes them not want to bark. So, there's lots of ways to help with that. Also, when you're in an area where you have subdivided neighborhoods butting up against rural properties, a lot of times you'll have horse, cows, goat challenges. We're very good and adept at dealing with those. Especially, there's a couple of properties that I've been made aware of that have a significant number of large animals on a very, very small piece of land. And those are things that we're good at, and we've done this for a while. I live out in the country. I have horses and goats and all kinds of fun stuff. I have 30, 40 chickens. I mean, I'm that guy. So, and I can relate, and it's, a lot of times it's about relating to the people and trying to help them as best you can. And then, and that works 90-plus percent of the time. But there's going to be a percentage where you have to use other methods. And it's usually getting in front of the court, imposing different fines and things to help them go the right direction. And we're good at doing both, so. And then, the last, dog bites. This is an important one. This is where cities find themselves getting in the most trouble. If you have a dog bite inside your city limits, you have to be able to, you have to know what to do. So, normally, you're contacted by the local medical facility, and they'll tell you, hey, Joey got bit. And they'll give you a basic name and phone number, maybe an address if you're lucky. And you start tracking it down. You figure out who owns the dog, was it current on its shots? If it's current, it is eligible for home quarantine if they have the ability, the right setup for it. If not, it has to go to a quarantine facility. For us, we don't mind if it's a local vet, or if it's us. We don't, I don't have, if there's somebody you feel more comfortable with, that's where I want you to be. If it's aggressive, most vets won't touch an aggressive animal, and we are set up for aggressive boarding. So, my staff are, we deal with it quite a bit. So, I'm going to recap the business really quick, because I got a little tongue-tied. 14 years, almost 14 years, 14 staff. We have over 90 runs, air-conditioned, climate-controlled. There's outdoor play yards in all the buildings. A lot of times, when you go to a facility, the dogs don't get to go outside. They have to stay inside all the time. We get them out immediately. And we want them out at least once a day. If it's, if we have time, we'll do a second time. But that makes them adapt better, it makes them more adoptable. It takes them longer to go steer crazy. Because over time, sometimes dogs, they call kennel crazy. They'll have, especially if it's a sporting breed, like a Dobby, a pointer, stuff like that. We adopt out over 90% of our animals into new homes. So, if it wags its tail coming in, over 90%, wag it going out. We are, because we have a no-kill status. I'm not a fan of the term, because a lot of times, that term's used to beat up good people that are trying to do the best they can. But this is something, we spend more effort, revenue, resources on the back end than on the front end. We have two dedicated teams that do external adoption events. Before COVID hit, we were doing three a month. Now, we just did our first one since COVID last weekend, and we got three dogs adopted on Saturday. And as we're able to, we're going to do more. I'm going to answer some of your questions and then see where it goes.
I don't know that, I don't know that we have a lot of questions now. I know where you're coming from. One of my pets at home right now is a rescue dog.
Yep.
One of our former pets, who's now my daughter's pet at her house, was a rescue dog. My question's pretty much going to be kind of on the personal line, but it may be something you encounter with them, with a dog being microchipped. If somebody has a dog that's microchipped, but that information was never either entered into the system or maybe, in any case, in one of my dogs, she's a rescue dog that was chipped. I don't remember if my wife and I updated that information. If you check a dog, is there a way to hold one of our residents that they finally found out, oh, you guys have them, but the chip was never, the information for the chip was never updated? Can you help them facilitate that change to get that information updated?
1,000%. And also, if the chip isn't updated in the system, oftentimes, any reputable adoption facility is going to keep a base record of where the dog went, and I'll be able to get your information from them, even though it's not on the tag.
Right.
90% of them do it. And actually, we use a common database called PetPoint to help with that information.
Okay.
So, also, one thing I forgot to say is, any dogs that are picked up Monday through Friday, they're returned to the people's house. We take them, once we make contact with the owner, we take them back to their front door.
Right.
They don't have to drive anywhere to come pick them up. We take them back home.
And then, I think my only other question is, are you, are we, are we seeing much activity in our city?
You don't have animal control, so the people don't even know, there's no one to call. There's no one.
Are you catching any calls? Are you catching a lot of calls in our city right now?
That would, they wouldn't be dispatched to us. That would be a question for the city staff.
Gotcha, okay.
So, that wouldn't be for, that's, yeah. They wouldn't, they wouldn't know to, they wouldn't know to call me. So, even last year, when I was, when you guys asked me to be like an emergency standby, which I've done, we stopped doing it, by the way. I've stopped doing it because it's just, it's hard to run a business when you don't, there's no structure in place, staffing and hours and all that good stuff. But once it starts, we're going to see a lot, once my truck starts driving around and they meet Andrew and they meet all the guys and gals, we're going to get a lot of calls. Because people will now have a resource to help them, which they currently don't.
Gotcha.
So.
So, this is called directly?
Yes, sir. Well, it happens multiple ways. They can call City Hall, any of you guys, City Secretary, anybody. And then you guys will forward it on to me or Kirk via, either via email or text. If they call the sheriff's department, whoever, who does your dispatching?
Sheriff's.
Yeah, they'll call the sheriff's department, and then they'll call us directly. Obviously, if there's a dog bite, the hospital will call us directly, because we're going to be your LRCA, your Local Rabies Control Authority. And so, we'll help you with that. Because that's, we take classes and we have to do continuing education for it, so we're well-versed in it, so.
So, would you, would we, Chief, prefer to have citizens call the city, you know, Lisa, on a 24/7 basis, or call animal dispatch?
They can call dispatch.
They can call dispatch. They have their government day, business hours, call directly, not that. He's going to track the calls for us if you have that software.
I guess I'm thinking about the monetary aspect assigned to it, too, because say there's a non-emergency call after 5 o'clock, that's a $225 service.
You'll never have a surprise bill from me, ever. I have never done it once. The chief will have to pre-authorize before I do anything. And I'm going to call, and I won't go out unless he tells me yes. And 90% of the time, yeah, 90% of the time, I'm not even going to present him with the call because I'm going to diffuse it before it gets to him. Because I don't want them to charge you money. I don't want that to happen. It's going to have to be something, honestly, what it's going to be is that person got ahold of you, 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 at 3 o'clock in the morning, and you're just done, you're tired of hearing about them. And then you're going to have me go out and take care of it. That's the only, that's usually when that happens, is when they get ahold of a whole bunch of people early in the morning. And then you're just like, just fix it, and I go out and fix it.
I mean, what about an emergency call? How does that work, say, during your after hours?
For like a police officer, or?
No, say there's an emergency animal, as you define in your.
Like a dog bite?
Yeah. Or was it an injured animal, or the owner's?
Yeah, this is hypothetically, there's an automobile strikes a dog, and the dog's injured in the middle of the road. They're going to call the sheriff. Sheriff's going to call me. At night, it'll be me. You're going to talk to me directly. And then I'm going to get ahold of, either it would be me or Andrew, because Andrew lives out here.
Yeah, whoever's your closest.
Yeah, he'll, it goes to Andrew first, and he's, there's only two nights available, or two nights a week where he likes a little bit of freedom, but the rest of the ones, he's fine doing no matter what. And then we'll come out immediately. We have some medicines on the truck that will take the pain away, so we can move the animal without causing him distress, his or her distress. And we'll get him in the truck, and then we're going to make him as comfortable as we can, and then he'll be taken to the, depending on his injuries and what's going on, that's where he'll see a vet the next morning, or as soon as the vet opens up, so.
So, how do we handle pets, or not pets, but dogs that are just dropped in our town? Because unfortunately, people do come here and just drop animals. How do we work the fee on that kind of thing?
Well, if it's in your city, it's part of your service. Now, one thing you'll notice is, from last year's numbers to this year's numbers, they're very different. And they are, and I structured the program to make it more palatable for you, to try to help. And so, you'll get 10 pickups a month, 10 a month, which is a lot. So, we're going to come out, we're going to pick up the animal, and we're going to, we're going to find, as long as it's not aggressive, it doesn't try to hurt anybody, he's going to find, he or she will get home. That's honestly what it is. It's, animals in our facility who don't get home are aggressive, or they're elderly and they're sick.
Right.
Those are the two, that makes up the overwhelming majority of the 9. whatever percent. It's because we can't. We just can't, we can't adopt, we can't put them into a new home because they just can't be there.
That's, if that's, we get 10 pickups there, so that's what we pay for it.
That'll be good. What, so say that the animal has to be boarded for, you know, a week or so before they're adopted. Do we pay daily?
You'll pay the fee.
Just the regular?
Yeah. The only, the only time, there's very few exceptions where there'll be extra fees, and you'll, because the fees, part of the good, the lining, the silver lining of this contract, the, your residents who use us pay for it. So, they're going to pay, they have an impound fee, they'll have boarding fees, they'll have quarantine fees. They're going to, the folks who utilize our service, that's where we get our revenue from instead of you. And that's one of the reasons we're so dramatically cheaper than doing it yourself. And also, we take away all of your, well, your attorney could talk to that, the majority of your liability. That's why I have all the different insurances and all the things we have, is to protect us and you. And we do this a lot.
I have a question. How do you, how are you guys going to approach a emergency situation as far as an abusive animal? That's, for example, let's say, as a hypothetical, let's say a family goes on vacation, the dog is stuck outside the backyard, and it's an abusive situation. How are you going to handle that?
Once we get the call, we'll dispatch a truck to verify it. Once we verify what has been said to us, and there actually is an animal in distress, and if we can't make contact with anybody, we're going to go, we're going to get with the chief, we're going to go to your local magistrate and get an order where we go in together and we seize the animal out of the backyard and make it safe until they get home. But a judge has to give us a warrant to do that. We can't just, nobody can walk on your property and yank your dog out and steal it. That's, you can't do that. So, we go through the legal process, and it can be done within 20, within 24 hours. And in the meantime, we'll give it food, we'll give it massive amounts of water, I'll spray it down with a hose, we'll figure out ways to cool him off, so, and make him, so he'll be okay till we can get to him, and we go from there.
As far as the call order?
Yeah. There's another fee for it. There's a fee in the contract. Well, what's going to happen, if that happens, we're going to have a conversation and we're going to fix it, we're going to amend the contract, and we'll make it to where it's a static cost for you. Because if you look at the numbers from last year, you'll understand what the real program costs, and it's more. So, but again, let's get you, and you might not need it. Let's just get in and see, and we'll go from there.
Any other questions? Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
If you'll turn that button up on that thing, because batteries don't last very long in those for whatever reason. All right, guys, we're on 6.2. I'll entertain a motion to approve. All right, I've got a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second it, Mayor.
I've got a motion and a second. Is there any other discussion on it? If not?
Just making sure that we've had all of staff able to review that contract. So, I'd like to amend it, to make sure that the city attorney has a chance to look at the contract.
You can make a motion to approve it, subject to your events, city attorney.
Do you want to amend your motion?
Sure. Do you see it?
Yes.
I've got a motion to, to the city, the city, the city, the contract based on the.
Subject to, subject to review.
Subject to review by the, with our, our, our.
All right, now, do I have a second on that?
Yes, sir, I'll second it.
I've got a motion and a second. Any other discussion on it? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Show that unanimous. All right, now we'll move on to 6.3. Discussion and action authorizing the city administrator enter into a contract with AG, make sure I get it right, AGCM, is that correct, guys? For project management consulting services related to the fire station project. You guys are going to give us an overview, is that correct? You'll push the button on there, turn it back on. Guys, I know it's hard to hear and to not take that thing off, so it can be heard.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Well, good evening. Thank you very much for having us. My name is Dave Funk. I'm with AGCM. This is Ryan Roseborough. He is the North Region, Regional Vice President. I believe you have our presentation in your materials. I'll run through this fairly high level fairly quickly. Feel free to stop and ask questions if you so choose as we go through. And of course, I'll entertain any questions you have at the end. So, just a little bit about who we are. We've been in business for 24 years, servicing basically from the central state all the way to the east, up and down. We were originally formed in Corpus Christi and have grown from Gail and Derwood Anderson to 70 employees across the state of Texas today. We are only currently in Texas as well. Some of what we do is, the crux of what we do is really, we advocate for your interest in this project. So, we represent you in this project. This project is slated to be a design-built project, which also requires an independent architect sit on the side of the city. So, one of our Texas licensed architects sits on this board through the, heavily through the design phase and really throughout the lifecycle of the project. We are, under Texas statute, we have a fiduciary duty to the city and thus the taxpayers. So, we basically become part of you. Easiest way to sort of explain that is we essentially become your construction management department, right? We've talked to the city manager and to the chief about office-ing here and using some of the available office space, so we sort of embed and engrain ourselves with you. Really, the goal, if we really do this well, you kind of forget that we're a third-party consultant. We make sure the corners aren't being cut. We're going to look at all the quality, all the design standards, and make sure that you're not only getting kind of what you want, but you're getting it at a high quality, right? So, if you look at some of the key factors, right, time, cost, quality. Think about, fast forward five years from now, what are people really going to remember? Quality, right? So, that's, we have a big focus on that. Quality and really usability, and we work with chief on that. We trust but verify every step. So, the designers, the contractors, the builders, you know, we're working, we work with them collaboratively, and we just verify everything that they tell. If they tell us that, you know, rebar is X dollars a linear square foot, we have actually an estimating department that I can pick up the phone and say, hey, is this right? Quick check, something that we can do. And we make sure, too, I think one of the other areas that we will really help you with is negotiating that contract upfront. We can often save the city a good amount of money negotiating those architect design fees and contractor fees. And we make sure along the process that all the parties are performing to their contract. So, why choose AGCM? We are, as we said, an experienced team. We have the registered architects required for this. We have a senior project manager who has done multiple fire stations, who is also, lives in Sunnyvale. So, he's a local resource. We have done a multitude of projects across the state, I believe correctly, from 75 to 85 fire stations in total?
And adding every day.
And adding every day. And actually, in addition to our meeting here tonight, we have four others this week alone that we're having these same discussions with. So, this is, so this project specifically is something that really is in AGCM's wheelhouse. So, the value to owner, as I said, you know, we exist solely to benefit you. You know, if you look at our contract, our contract is based on hourly rates. We project out the hours or level of effort to complete this project. So, and our contract is also not to exceed. So, these are important for several reasons. If I come to this council at a meeting and I say, hey, we're looking at XYZ, and it's going to be an additional cost of $200,000, you need to understand that that recommendation is for the betterment of the project. We do not charge based on a percentage of construction, like the designer and the contractors, right? So, if we come and tell you that, you need to be able to trust that there's no benefit to us in that, right? We're doing that because we truly believe that that recommendation is in the interest of the city and the community. Obviously, we want to keep things, you know, on time and in budget, and frankly, under budget. I mean, our goal is, we want to recoup our fee plus in savings, right? We can't promise that, obviously, because your attorney's right there. But, you know, really, that's what we're shooting for. You know, we want to make sure that there's a great value add in this for you. We look at the scope creep and try to prevent that. Chief and I had that conversation. You know, architects are artists, right? So, they're going to design something that's big and beautiful and has got three stories of glass. Well, that is, has no functionality for chief, right? And is expensive. So, those are some of the things that we try to just keep in line of what is the functionality of the building? What does chief need now and in the future? We've talked about future plans for the facility. The other thing that you expect from us, things happen during construction, always do. Never expect us to come in front of you and say that there's one solution. There's always more than one answer, okay? So, we're going to bring those recommendations, A, B, C. We'll tell you of A, B, C, we recommend B, and you may say, well, because of this, this, and this, we want to go with C. Fine, we will go, we will go forward, and we will execute and implement C, and you're back. Some of the other services that we'll bring in is value engineering. You know, we're going to look at, can this be built efficiently? You know, we're going to look at some of the procurement services. So, we're going to help you, as I mentioned, we're going to help you negotiate those contracts. There's some procurement for things like the geotechnical services that'll need to be done. We'll write those RFPs, we will put them out, we'll answer the questions, we'll alleviate that from city staff's day-to-day duties. However, we don't just take it. We're going to take it, we're going to summarize it, and we're going to inform them. This is a very collaborative process. We, you know, I'm a former, I worked at a municipality, so I'm a former owner. And I did not want somebody just doing my program. I don't operate that way. You all need to live with this, right? We're going to do this project, and then we're going to be gone. Hopefully not, because hopefully we've got something else and we can keep working. And we'd be here for 20 years. We're going to be doing is quality assurance, change order reviews, as I sort of touched on. We'll tell you whether we think a change order is necessary or not. Again, we have no benefit to us, there's no incentive for us to tell you anything other than, you know, yes, no, do it, don't do it. We don't win or lose either way. And then one of the other, kind of the final things that I definitely want to point out, that we're a little bit different, we don't just run off, right? Chief doesn't move into the building. Chief doesn't move into the building and we're gone. Um, we've got warranty phase time built in, so chief will have access to us for, uh, was it 12 months, I believe? 12 months?
For the life of the building.
Yeah.
As long as I'm on this area, days in this area, you call us, we come help you.
And that's, that's some of, you know, some of the other things I think that we can point out and act about, you know, so, so Sean Spires, who's slated to be on this project, his previous life was in pipelines. Um, you know, and if he's here and you wanna stick your head in and just ask him a question, you know, we're there for a resource, right? Um, you wanna drop me an email and ask me a question, I will tell you, I don't know anything about pipelines, that is not my will. But, we have 70 employees that I can certainly fire an email off to and, and find out the answer. Um, so, that's, that's some of, uh, just, you know, running through this, um, you know, we'll, we'll keep all the records of the project as well, um, so all, all the financial records, all the pay applications, all of the forms, so if somebody comes to you five years down the road, you're gonna have a nice little tidy USB that you stick in the computer and pull everything up, which might be outdated by fi- in five years, but, um, you know what I mean. Um, some of the other things too that, um, you know, just in talking, um, with, with staff that we can help out with is just some of the marketing piece, I believe the intent is to have some public meetings, um, we can help, uh, you know, I, I, I worked, um, the place I worked for, we, we did these monthly, on a monthly basis across 41 projects, so I'm a pro at that. Uh, we will help you, we'll help you prepare the materials, we'll help you prepare the presentation, um, we've got some of that scope, um, built in, and we built that scope in just that, there was no cost associated with that scope. Um, so, just, that's what you all needed, so I threw it all, I threw it in there. Um, so, I said I would be brief, I tried to be brief, I spoke fairly quickly, hopefully covered everything, um, but certainly wanted to open it up for questions.
Question?
How much time would you suggest that you're going to have the project manager on-site?
Um, the, the number of hours?
No, I guess, you know, three days a week, two days a week, 20 hours.
I'll answer that, 'cause I'm gonna be directly overseeing that. We'll have him here as much as is needed.
Yeah.
That's the bottom line. We'll have, you know, when there's a 2:00 AM concrete pour, we're gonna be here for that 2:00 AM concrete pour. Uh, when there's a 6:00 PM, you know, walk-through of the building with the city council, we're gonna be here for that. Uh, so, we're here as needed, because we're billing you on an hourly basis, um, we try to be conscious of when we are and aren't there, we're not gonna just sit there and milk the pot, uh, but at the same time, you know, we wanna make sure that we're a good presence and we're on-site when we need to. So, uh, we don't do like a Monday, Wednesday, and Friday, we do, uh, we try to be on-site every day. That's ultimately our goal, is to be on-site at least for a portion of the day, every single day, because stuff happens fast on the construction side, walls get covered up in 24 hours, and if you didn't see it, you can't attest to what's there. So, it's really important to us, um, boots on the ground is something that you are gonna hear me say a lot, uh, boots on the ground is a big deal for us. We do not manage budgets from the office. We find that that is a terrible way to manage a construction project when everybody else is in the field, so boots on the ground, big deal for us, we're gonna be out there on-site, often, very often.
And that person lives in this area, so it's not gonna be too much of a hardship for that person?
Not at all, no, no, not at all. Sunnyvale.
We know somebody that has connections with Sunnyvale.
That's not fair. My, my full-time job, I work in Sunnyvale.
Okay.
But, but that's a big, uh, you know, for us, it's important to office where the work is and on-site, Dave mentioned, office in here, uh, it's important for us to be close so that the chief, or at least if you stick their head in and ask a question, then they know where to find us. We're not gonna be in an office, you know, 60 miles away, 80 miles away, 50 miles away, 100 miles away, we're gonna be out there.
Any other questions?
We have, um, like, specific, if we narrow the onto, I was on team, this, uh, do you want to, for, 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 for...
Yeah, a- actually, we, I think you posted your list, we've already started working on that. Yes, we have. Yeah. Uh, I mean, we, we looked at the list, we haven't looked at the, at the responses necessarily, um, but we looked, I guess, the list of the 18, 18 submittals were, were posted, so we already started going through, researching the architects and the contractors that were on those teams, um, so we've already crossed off a good number, 10, 12, where one member of the team did not have fire station experience, so, so yeah.
Or somebody had that experience, or we had that.
Is there more?
Yeah.
Some of those we saw on your list are very qualified individuals that we know, you know, we've seen at the safety council, the fire station, however, we know who they are, they've got a long resume, and some, they're like, "Yeah, what does this person submit for us?" And, you know, I know some of them submitted, which are probably submitted, so, you know, there was an interesting process, and you had a lot of, a lot of competition for you. Exciting.
Absolutely, yeah. As well as any additional procurements that might need to take place. So, like, um, the geotechnical survey, as I mentioned, I've already, so I, I've seen the design build, R, uh, RFP that went, or RFQ that went out, RRRFQ, so I've got a feel for what your documents need to look like, so I've already got the next one prepared and ready to go.
Did you mention something about, um, the, uh, do you, uh, do you, uh, Sean, Sean obviously, uh, involved with it, I mean, I think very, very valuable to our community? Uh, would that be something that Sean would coordinate, or would that be something that we gotta...
Um, it depends on sort of what phase we are, we are in, right? Um, so, you know, maybe if it's, it's kicking off the project, it's probably gonna be Ryan, myself, or a combination of both of us. Um, Paul Coleman is the architect, um, on this project, so if it's a design-related or design-phase kind of focused item, y- you know, it might make sense to have Paul there. Um, the preparation of the materials are actually done by my marketing team, and I, I oversee all of that. Um, so, drafting those items, uh, you know, "Hey, does this look good? How do you want this shifted around?" Um, that would all be kind of run through me, so it just kind of depends on where we are in the project, you know, start of, uh, construction phase, we, you know, would be Sean. "Okay, folks, expect, you know, trucks to start rumbling down the street and this to happen in that day."
And let me say too, it depends what your goals are, you know, it's almost, uh, for us, what you're looking for your constituents to get out of it. If you want them just to have transparency and peace of mind, uh, we have a program we use called ProCore, where we upload all of our documents, it's out there. Every, you can log in and look at it, anybody can log in and look at it if wants to see, or anybody that you want to log in and see. Um, so, you know, sometimes we have workshops on the city council meeting, where we can come in and publicly invite everybody to do a rundown of what's going on with the project, and invite them to it, and sometimes city councilmen will say, "Nah, just come and give us an update of the next city council meeting." If anybody has questions, they can speak, you know, whatever they have to say. What, really, whatever you're at, we're very flexible. There's no really set manual, it's whatever you all want.
All right, guys, we appreciate it, no, no questions, right? Okay. Thank you so much, you'll just push the button so we can save the batteries on this? Um, I know there was some question on some wording in the contract, um, we wanna make a motion, uh, to direct staff to maybe have that part of it worked out, negotiated, whatever the proper word is for that, um, about that wording in the contract.
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion if we pass this policy, we should, uh, contract for the AGCM, uh, part of it.
Okay. Uh, got a motion and a second? I've got a motion and a second, any other discussion? All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
All right. Um, move on to six point four. Thank you so much, guys, I'm sorry. Appreciate the presentation, thank you very much.
Yes, sir.
Six point four is, let me see, consider the adoption of an ordinance approving the issuance and sale of City of McLendon, Chisholm, Texas, special assessment review, refunding and improvement bonds, series 2020, uh, Sonoma Public Improvement District Phase One project and approving various documents related to such bonds, including the Sonoma Public Improvement District 2020 Annual Service Plan Update, um, let's see. Jason, he'll turn it on, you're on, sir.
Evening, Mayor, Council, good to be with you again. If you recall, back on May 12th, I came and reported to you then about a potential refunding of the Sonoma, uh, Phase One PID bonds, and I gave you some stats then, and I'm pleased to announce that we've beaten, uh, the projections that I gave you on May 12th. I believe Lisa sent you a one-page summary.
Yes, we, we do have it.
And I'll just very quickly kind of go through and hit the high points on that. Uh, just as a reminder, we refunded about $6.9 million of the 2015 bonds, so we've taken all of those out. If you recall, the interest rates on those were anywhere from 5 and an 8 to 5.5 percent. We are at historically low interest rates right now, and so as you can see below, that's what allowed us to get a 3% interest rate on this refinancing. The other component, I, I kind of skipped ahead just a minute, let me go back. In addition to taking out the bonds, we also took out the reimbursement agreement, and as you can see there, the interest rate on that was 6.35 percent, so we actually more than halved that interest rate there, and then again, uh, decreased the interest rate by about 2 to 2.5 percent on the bond portion. So, what that ultimately means, as you can see there, the par amount of bonds, we sold about $9.26 million. I put just that first chart there to give you an idea, prior to this refunding, the total amount, so this would be the amount paid from 2021 through 2045, the total amount to be paid was about $17.6 million. As a result of the refunding, the debt service is about $13.4 million, so we were able to produce overall debt service, again, over the life of the bonds, about $4.2 million. So, very happy with that. One other thing I would point out, as you can see again in that top box, your debt service prior to the refunding went out through 2040 on the bonds, the reimbursement agreement through 2045, we kept that same term, so we didn't extend your debt at all, again, we just put in new interest rates that were lower. As you can see there in the second box, the, uh, projected total assessment for FY 2021 prior to the refunding was about $850,000. We lowered that down, uh, to where it's about 75 percent of that now, so, uh, it's down to about $637,000. What that ultimately means, if you recall back on, uh, May 12th, what I had reported is that assessments would be going down about 15.5 percent for homeowners or for property owners, and now that's gonna be closer to about 25 percent. So, again, extremely happy about that. One thing I would say also too, we are maintaining future flexibility, we actually have a call date in there for 2028, so what that simply means is, we get to 2028, we could actually have another refinancing, which would, again, drive down, um, the assessments that are paid on those properties even further. Uh, as part of your agenda item, it includes approval of the bonds, it includes approval of the legal documents, it includes approval of the service and assessment plan. Kirk McDaniel, uh, is here from P3, he works with Mary Petty, so he can answer any questions if you have any on the service and assessment plan. And then Robert Rivera is also here with FMS Bonds, they were the underwriters, they're the ones that went out and got you a great rate of 3%. So, again, overall, I was very happy, what I had projected was 3.4% to come in, almost one-half of 1% lower. Uh, it's fantastic, and obviously, that translates into your citizens paying less in assessments, so something they should be very happy about. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
We have any questions, guys? Sounds like we're saving the citizens' money.
Yeah, I think just to clarify, it's for the citizens of living in Sonoma, very phase one.
That's a great, i- i- these are as they were before, these are solely paid from assessments in phase one, so that's a great point. No taxes, anything like that, but those assessment payers will see their assessments go down.
I live in phase one.
Yeah.
That makes me happy, anytime I can save a dollar, makes me happy. Yeah.
25 percent, so 25 percent reduction in their overall assessment.
That's right, and, and I will say, the lots, there are different lot sizes, so that dollar amount will be, will be different, right, but generally speaking, it is approximately 25 percent.
When, how will they be notified?
So, they will get a bill, and whenever they would normally get their assessment bill, it will be on that bill, and so it should be lower, and Kirk, I don't know if you have anything to clarify on that, but, okay. And again, one thing I would say is, that's part of what you're approving tonight is that service and assessment plan, which includes the effect of the refunding today.
Will, will they, in case, well, they all get the, the bill at once, or is it...
My understanding, are they on the tax, is that right? Okay, so, whenever they receive their tax bills, which will be doable on, or payable on January 31st, that it would be on that tax bill, the assessment will be?
See that reduction then?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, that's fine. Just in case we got questions from...
Absolutely. Understand.
Any other questions for either one of them? If not, uh, one more question. Uh, when is the call date? Do you know the call date for the other phases?
Um, so, the phase two, if members serve, I think you just sold that last year or the year before, and so I don't think that that is until maybe 25, 26, 27, some...
We got a little time now.
You do have, yes, sir. And I can double-check that and get back to Lisa, but I, it is a couple of years into the future, if I'm not mistaken.
Okay, excellent.
Sure.
All right, if there's no further questions, I'll entertain a motion.
Uh, we, 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 uh,
Let me give you just a little bit of information on that. This item is due to the new tax law requirements. It doesn't change anything from our previous years. Texas now requires the council to officially designate a person to calculate the tax rates. We did some checking, or city staff did checking with other towns within the county, and they're all naming Kevin Passon, if I say his last name correct. He's the chief appraiser of the Rockwall CAD as the official designated person to calculate the no-new tax rate and voter approval rate. It used to be known as the effective tax rate and the rollback rate. They've come up with new names for it. I'll need a motion to approve the resolution. So, I'll entertain a motion to approve that resolution to name him as that individual.
And that motion to, um, to set the resolution, let the chief appraiser of Rockwall CAD to calculate the voter approval rate and voter approval rate, and, um, in accordance with such increases of the, of the Texas tax rate, and, uh, provision of assets, to, uh, to the Rockwall CAD.
All right, I've got a motion, do I have a second?
I'll second the motion.
All right, I've got a motion and a second. Shelley, do I need to read that resolution verbatim? Okay. All right, I've got a motion and a second. Any more discussion on it? If not?
Uh, so, I'd be curious, so if Kevin Passon is going to be reviewing it for our city, is Rockwall CAD also going to be reviewing it as well?
He is. He is Rockwall CAD.
Yeah, yeah, I know, I mean, it's just, it says here that, in the resolution, that Rockwall CAD is going to be doing the numbers as well, so.
Well, they provide us with certain information for those numbers.
Okay.
So, that may be why that's written that way.
Yeah, because the way it looks is, is that if Rockwall CAD is producing numbers and we hire somebody from Rockwall CAD to produce those numbers, it looks like, oh.
All right, any other further discussion? All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Show that unanimous? All right, we're moving on to 6.6. Discussion and Action Regarding Resolution Amending Resolution Number 2020-03 Establishing an Economic Development Committee and Regulations for that Committee. Little, uh, note on that, prior to the COVID hitting, the council approved the resolution establishing the Economic Development Committee. We had some interest in local business owners who would like to serve on the committee. The proposed resolution allows up to two non-residents who both own a business and property in McClankey-Chisholm to serve on the committee. As with anything, guys, you don't have to approve, uh, that idea or that resolution, but we have struggled to get people on there to participate. I'm going to leave it up to y'all. If you guys want to entertain a motion, um, to approve that, it's.
They're not able to do that, they're, like, I said, they're moving a little bit.
If they bought property.
They're invested.
Yeah.
They, they, I thought that mission of the best that he needs to be successful, but he cannot, he cannot provide them that community, so.
Okay. Well, I'll entertain, did you make the motion? I'm sorry? We can't discuss it unless we have a motion.
We, again, the resolution, 2020, dash, establishing, um, the economic development committee, regulations for that committee to include, for the businesses that are active businesses present in the city.
So, the, so, the word "active." So, active business that are within the city limits.
I mean, if we, uh, we, uh, we're going to ask, whether it is specified as a brick-and-mortar business or if it's an online business.
Um, I believe we, I believe it's going to be specified, but if not, we can specify that it has to be a physical or a brick-and-mortar business within the community.
Right.
Yeah. All right, so I've got a motion and a second. We've had discussion, any other discussion on it? If not, all in favor? Aye? Hold on, hold on.
Nathan, will you amend your motion to accept any changes that we just made?
Yes.
Uh.
Good catch.
Yeah, I would like to, uh, make a motion to amend Resolution 2020, dash, or three establishing, uh, the economic development committee and regulations for that committee to include, for the businesses that are active businesses present in the city.
All right, I've got the motion, and you still second it?
Yes, sir, I still second it.
Okay, so we've still got a second? Any other discussion? If not, all in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Show that unanimous? All right, I apologize, but my, I kept shut down, so I'm waiting for it to pull back in. All right, we'll move on to 6.7, which is Discussion and Action Regarding Appointments to the Economic Development Committee. All right, let's open that. Am I looking at this right? Shelley, Tommy Ball is wanting to be on the economic development committee?
Yes, it is.
Okay. Um, Mark Kipit, Paul Patrick Day, and Melody Osorio, Jim Heron, and Noreen Childers? And let's see, and Leslie Swalgi? Swalgi, is that correct?
Oh, she's one, yes.
Okay. And that's all of them for this one?
We have seven members and seven applications.
I just want to make sure I was looking at it correctly.
Yes.
Um, all right, guys, this is going to be, um, if you guys are happy with, there's seven members right there, and then the determination of who's on a one-year term and who's on a two-year term.
Can the committee decide that one for one, or can we have to say that?
I think they can.
I think we have to decide that to get it in, in line with how it operates and when people come on, when people come off.
We have four members who serve two years, and three members who serve one year, the first government.
So, say that one more time.
Four will serve two-year terms.
Okay.
And three will serve one-year terms.
Now, on the, uh, on the application, so we have seven voting members and two alternates, how long are we going to keep the application open for the alternates?
I would like to keep receiving applications around here, because we really need the alternates.
Yeah, we do.
We don't usually close our application period. Um, if someone's interested, we want to have their application filed, so when something comes up, we can pull that application.
Well, I would like to suggest that Noreen be in for two years, because she's the, uh, oh, she's the, uh, person that has the business.
Can I, uh, conclude this?
Got to prove the list first.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
It's not my job to be bought first, my job.
I know, that's why you're here.
And, and, and in abundance of caution, it's a better practice, it's not illegal to prove all the list at once, but it's a better practice to do.
Do them one at a time.
Joe Blow for a two-year term, Allison for a one-year term.
Works, works for me. All right, then.
I, I, I think that you, I think the better practice is to prove them individually.
I'm, I'm with you. Then we will go one by one.
Do we have the, huh?
No, he just said do one by one.
No, just one by one. All right, first one up is, and I'm going to go on the order that I can see in front of me. Mr. Tommy Ball. All right, guys.
I'd like to nominate Tommy for a two-year term.
Okay, he's been nominated for a two-year term. All right, do I have a second on that?
I'll second.
All right, all in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Okay, Tommy's your two-year. Uh, Mr. Mark Kipit.
I'm, uh, uh, two, uh, two, uh, uh.
All right, I've got a motion on there, do I have a second?
I'll second.
All right, I've got a motion and a second. All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
All right, show that one done, uh, in unanimous. Uh, Paul Patrick Day.
I'd like to recommend Paul Patrick Day for a two-year term.
All right, I've got a motion on Paul Patrick Day for a two-year term, do I have a second? Yeah?
I'll second.
Okay, I've got a second, and that's for a two-year term. All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Melody Osorio. I'll entertain a motion on Melody for...
I'd like to nominate Melody Osorio for a one-year term.
Okay, I've got a motion for her on a one-year term. Do I have a second? I've got a motion and a second. All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
All right, that's unanimous. Uh, Mr. Jim Heron, I'll entertain a motion on Mr. Heron.
I'm, uh, to, uh, to, uh, to, uh.
All right, does that fill out the last one for two years? Okay, I've got a motion on Mr. Heron for a two-year term, do I have a second?
I'll second.
I've got a motion and a second. All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
All right, I've got two for, all opposed? Nay?
Nay.
All right, I've got two and two. Um, hmm? Okay.
So, we need to change the...
I'm sorry, hold on.
So, we need to change the, uh...
Well, how many do we have already for three?
Three.
We've got three?
Three.
Okay.
So, we change it to, uh, I change it to, uh, 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 motion to, uh, to...
Well, here's the thing, we already have the motion on there, and we have a tie right now, so I got to break that before we can make a new motion, is that not correct?
Yeah.
Okay, um, I'm going to vote nay. All right, so now we can entertain a new motion on that.
Correct. So, I'm, uh, going to, uh, uh, uh.
All right, I've got a motion for a one-year term, do I have a second?
I have a second.
I've got a motion and a second. All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Okay. All right, next up, Noreen Childers.
I'd like to make a motion to, uh, nominate Ms. Childers for a two-year, uh, appointment on the Economic Development Committee.
All right, I've got a motion for a two-year term, do I have a second? I've got a second. All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Oh, I'm sorry, hold on.
Chisholm country store.
The little country store. All right. All right, no more further discussion, all in favor? Aye?
Aye.
All right. And now, we've got Leslie Swalgi for a one-year term. All right, so I'll entertain the motion on that. I'm going to do it fair.
To, uh, ask Leslie to serve on the, uh, the, uh, the, uh.
All right, do I have a second?
So.
I've got a motion and a second. All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
All right, that takes care of all of them, correct? All right, and that was 6.7. All right, 6.8. Discussion and Action Regarding Appointment of a Council Member to Serve as Liaison to the Economic Development Committee.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to, uh, appoint Councilmember Dahl to serve as liaison on the Economic Development Committee.
Okay, I've got a motion for nomination of Mr. Dahl. Do I have a second? Got a motion and a second. Do we have any discussion? All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Show that unanimous, Mr. Dahl.
I got some work.
I got some work.
I got some work.
All right. 6.9. Discussion and Action Regarding Appointments to the Planning and Zoning Commission. All right, let me bring that one up. Give me just a second, because this thing's turning now. All right, what we have there is the... We have what you're showing, I'm trying to read this.
We need, um, we need five members, and right now, we have, uh, one, two, three, four committees, four, three people who are still on the committee.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, we need to appoint someone to fill Robert Vodin's position, who chose not to re, to, uh, ask for a reappointment.
Okay.
And we need one to fill Tom Ball's position, who chose to drop this one, so we can concentrate on economic development.
Okay.
Um, we, we do have three alternates, um, right, yeah. So, um, I'm just going to say what we're recommending, since we didn't get any other applications. Daniella has been on the, um, as an alternate for over a year, maybe a little bit more. And then Sheri London, um, has not been on there, Sher, Sher term actually expires this year. And then Brian Lane is an alternate. I spoke with Daniella, she would like to go as a full voting member. Um, Sheri says she would like to be, um, a voting member. And that would leave us with Brian Lane and Brad Martin, who is a new applicant, to be the alternate members.
So, what do you do with one of the time, right?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to, uh, have Sheri London, uh, remain as a alternate. No, as a full-time, full-time.
Sheri, you're a movement.
Sheri, I'd like to make a motion to, uh, have Sheri be a, a full-time member of PNC, regular member, sorry.
All right, I've got a motion on that one. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
All right, any discussion? If not, all in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Okay, what's the next one?
I'd like to make a motion to have, uh, Daniella Swindall be a, um, regular member of PNC.
I'll second that.
All right, I've got a motion and a second. Any discussion? If not, all in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Okay.
I'd like to make a motion to, uh, select Brad Martin as an alternate on PNC.
I've got a motion on that, do I have a second?
So.
Okay, motion and a second, if there's no discussion, all in favor? Aye?
Aye.
All right, what are we missing?
We're done.
We're done on that one, okay. All right. Now, 6.10. Let me see if I can get to it. Um, yes, ma'am?
It's, uh, it's, uh, I mean, it's, uh, I'm sorry, I'm, 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 um, on Brad's, uh, application, he's, uh, planning his nominee position being in economic development, but I did not see his name on economic development, yes. You're right. No, that shouldn't. Um, okay, well, I think what we can do, if we want to, is we can make him an alternate on economic development, and that would give us an alternate on that, since we have alternates in PNC. So, can he be on both?
Yeah, there's nothing that they can't serve more than one.
Well, we need to let him, we need to probably go back to him and ask him if he would want to be a two, because it's time limit.
Well, now, we're not, we're, we're, we're trying to have an PNC, and, 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 and he's, he's applied for, uh, and, 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 and he's on the list of PNC.
Well, perhaps we could, uh, direct staff to, uh, reach back to Mr. Martin to see if he would be, uh, interested in also seeking, uh, the alternate on PNC.
Alternative on PNC?
No, alternative on economic development.
Oh, I can, I can.
Yeah, ask him and see what is.
How about asking?
All right, now we're on to 610. Discussion and Action Regarding Appointments to the Board of Adjustments. Let's look at the applicant pool. Um, it's Beverly Stevens. Let's see if I can see the whole list.
Melody Osorio.
Melody Osorio, is that the only two?
Yes, we got one, two.
Okay.
Has anybody else seen the alternates?
I'm talking about?
Any of the alternates? Does anybody have? Um, well, David Cross expired in 2012.
He just kind of joined, though, in 2019.
I think he just joined.
He just joined when we got on council.
Yeah, because I'm talking about, uh, uh.
So, we've got a few, um, notes that say the term expires on June 2, uh, 2019.
And that's just for a year, and I just thought. Okay, I think if this is, uh, right, I know.
Let's go back to this one.
Next meeting? Take a look? I mean, that postponed?
This, this one can go to the next meeting.
All right, then we will.
Although Beverly is here, and since I begged her to apply, I think we should go there.
Yeah.
That's, 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 uh, she's, uh, she's.
I know.
She's expired.
Definitely not bad. Then I need, I need a motion, guys.
I'd like to make a motion to appoint, uh, Beverly Stevens as... I'd like to make a motion to appoint Beverly Stevens as, um, Chairperson of the Board of Adjustments.
I believe that's a two-year term. Alright, I've got a motion, do I have a second? Okay, don't fight over it, I've got a motion and a second, any discussion? If not, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Now, right now, you actually have...
Melody too.
Two that went on there, so I'll entertain a motion on Melody Osorio. Now, did we not put her on Economic Development as well?
Yes.
But she did apply for both.
Yes.
I'll entertain a motion.
There's no, there's no ordinance that says people can't.
Correct. Correct. Alright, do I have a second? I've got a motion and a second, if there's no discussion, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
And then...
I just got my own action, and I actually wrote over.
Yes, ma'am.
And those, um, that, so that expire in twenty nineteen should be twenty one. They all have another period.
Great.
Great. Alright, there's nothing else on that one?
Yes.
Yeah. Alright, the next thing, we'll move on to six, six point one-one, Consideration and Action Regarding Accepting the Resignation of Mayor Pro Tim Blum for Place Four, Mclellan and Chisholm City Council. Alright, guys.
I'd like to make a motion accepting the resignation of Mayor Pro Tim Blum.
Alright, I've got a motion, do I have a second? I've got a motion and a second, is there any discussion? If not, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Show that unanimous, alright, moving on to six twelve, Discussion and Action Regarding Selection of a New Mayor Pro Tim.
I'd like to make a motion to nominate, uh, Councilmember Hodges as the new Mayor Pro Tim.
I've got a motion, do I have a second?
Mayor, I'll second that.
Alright, I've got a motion and a second, any discussion? If not, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Welcome back to that side. Alright. Alright, now that we're done with that, now we'll get down to, we, we did seven one, seven two, an executive session, um, we reconvened from the executive session, down to seven point four, executive se, se, getting old tonight, executive session action on seven point two, um, it is concerning, uh, implementing a bi-weekly city administrator's update, um, once we know exactly what needs to, what needs to be in that update, you've got direction on that, so. Alright, um, eight point one, Building Official Report for June of twenty twenty, any questions? If not, we'll move on to eight point two, Budget Report for June of twenty twenty. Any questions, discussion? If not, we'll move on to eight three, Rockwell County Sheriff's Report for June of twenty twenty, any questions? If not, we'll move on to eight point four, Community Waste Disposal or our trash company for the city, June twenty twenty report, any questions? I have not heard anything in the neighborhood, um, understanding how they run, I know that my trash, trash might get picked up at seven, eight o'clock in the morning, my recycle might not get picked up till six or seven at night, uh, but I understand how they're working, so I understand that can be a little late, um, I haven't heard of any issues. Let's see, next thing, eight point five, uh, Mclellan and Chisholm Fire Department District Report for June of twenty twenty and Incident Report for twenty twenty, do we have any questions? If not, we'll move on to number nine, Update, Discussion and Direction of Staff, um, there is one thing I want to say under Updates, Discussion and Direction of Staff, um, I have noticed some issues that are starting to occur in Sonoma Verde, um, they're issues that the sheriff's office is going to be addressing, uh, because I called them, uh, last Tuesday when we were here for a council meeting, um, after I left here and drove home, um, I witnessed several vehicles thinking that the main road coming in, coming in and out of Sonoma Verde was a racetrack. And, you know, I'm not gonna sit here and point fingers, they were young aged drivers, and they were doing well in excess of the speed limit and literally taking up three-quarters of the road. And that is not acceptable, because I don't want to see somebody having to make a notice to somebody's family because somebody wrecked out and somebody died. So we, we need to address that with our various HOAs to make sure that the people driving in the various communities are being cautious, because there are kids who are walking, there are people out jogging, people walking dogs, and it was brought to my attention earlier today before council that there was an incident within the last week where somebody was hit by a vehicle in Sonoma Verde. They were hit by a, I believe it was a mirror of a vehicle, but they were coming through there driving a little reckless and actually clipped somebody. We need to be very conscious of that, because that's not good for anybody.
Mr. Mayor, along that same line in Sonoma Verde, I think we've gotten some complaints as well about, uh, construction occurring before seven a.m. and after seven p.m., and I think Chief.
That has been addressed.
Has been working, uh, working with them.
Yes, ma'am, and David L, the civilian official which normally handles that on a regular basis is involved as well, so he, I'm gonna let him, he's gonna continue to handle it the way he normally has, I will help and make him drive through different times of the day, morning and evening, to, uh, see if we still have issues, and I will give it his little work to make sure we.
Thank you.
Uh, get it resolved as much as we can.
Yes, we're on nine. I'm sorry, I was trying to figure out what you meant, but yes, and that is correct, there have been some issues, um, it was relayed to me by one of our citizens on a couple of days in a row, um, I immediately relayed it to the chief, and he went out there and addressed it with the builders, apparently the first time he discussed it with them, they, somewhere in there, they lost translation in what was communicated, and he had to readdress it with them, I've not heard any complaints since then. The thing is, and, and guys, I'm, I'm by no means an expert when it comes to the construction side of, of things, but we are in the middle of summer, and we all know how unbearably hot it gets, there are certain things that during the summer heat don't handle well during the heat of the day, such as concrete can only sit in that concrete truck for so long before they can accept a load because of whatever reasons the way concrete does its thing, um, there may be where the city and/or council as a whole may have to address allowing construction outside the normal hours that are written in our organs because of the heat of the day, that may not be able to pour concrete. Yeah, yeah. Right, I mean, there may, they may, we may have to issue some provisions at certain, and we can control that, certain days, they can operate outside those hours because then maybe they've got to pour a foundation for something, and they can't do it necessarily in the heat of the day, they gotta get it at the right time, so it's got the proper cure time and everything else, but those need to be handled on a case by case, not a cart launch, because it's summer, you can operate whenever.
And as long as we just inform the community.
Well, and that's, the, the other side is communicating with everyone, that there will be times that we have to do that, so. Alright, um, anybody else have any other updates? You will have an opportunity in just a minute, number ten, if you've got specifics that you're assigned to that you can update on, um, if not, we'll move on to ten, Council Member Reports and Amendments. Oh, okay, go ahead, I'm sorry. I can explain that to you later, Rob.
And, and we'll, we'll need to make sure that we get the contract signed, so speaking with those gentlemen, they are ready as soon as we get that accomplished, so the sooner we get it done, um, the next day, or even that evening, they said we could meet and go ahead and start that process, because they understand the timelines, yes, ma'am? Okay, once we do that, you will, obviously, I will set up a, an invite for everybody to be on the same page.
Alright, moving on to number ten. Absolutely. Absolutely, it will, it will be missed. Trudy, do you have anything on, anything going on, anything? Yes, absolutely. With everything going on right now, I don't want us to lose caring about our community and trying to do things for the community, and the reason I say that is, Christmas is a little ways off, there's, there's always, it could change for the worse, it could change for the better, I believe it's gonna change for the better. Halloween's before that, I, if we have the opportunity to maybe do something like, and I may have the word wrong, like trunk retrieve, whatever they call it, maybe with the fire department or something, to give people something good, you know, something to feel like they're not stuck behind a mask and stuck in a home and, and told they can't do X, Y, and Z anymore. I know, but I'm saying, if, if, if anything, look to see if there's something we could do there, even if.
I have an idea for that, I talked to you about.
Because.
Should cost us anything?
I, I've watched, I, I've watched the kids since spring break, and how deflated these kids are and families are, I mean, I, I sponsored a, a senior this last year, and she seemed a little deflated because she's got a full ride spa, or she's got a scholarship, I think it's a full ride, to play volleyball at a college, she still gets to keep her scholarship, but they're not playing this year, and that's, that's a child that has a passion for playing that sport, and they're being told they're not getting to play. So, these kids are dealing with a lot of emotions, and, and so are families, because we have families that are having to reorganize their whole lifestyle and their work schedules, because kids can't go to the school in some cases, you know, where they're on a modified, I don't know how my family would have handled that when I was a child if I had gone through that, you know, it's, it's a tough situation, so anything we can do to bring a little sunshine to their lives would be awesome. Mr. Dahl?
Actually, what I got is, um, because of the resolutions and events that happened tonight, um, during, during nine, nine point, I forgot to ask Shelley something.
What did you forget to ask her?
To set up a meeting for the Economic Development.
I don't know that we have to do that, during that, he can actually get with you afterwards and, and set that, you can give him direction, under, you know, your report, did you like to set up a, a plan, since you're, you're that, uh, liaison?
That, that said, I just wanna go ahead and get that started.
Okay. Melody?
Just one thing, see, I was thinking we need to, uh, postpone our, we had that, you know, but I just think it's premature.
And I'm fine with that.
Lunch and learns yet, and so we can get everybody together doing a, a lunch and learn.
Here's the only, here's the only option I'll, I'll tell you, and I, and I don't necessarily care for them, because I think they're open to glitches with the system. But even if you guys wanna maybe, and I'm gonna throw a couple of ideas out there, videotape a lunch and learn where, hey, here's what we're gonna talk about, here's, here's the questions we think are gonna come, and, and we can put it on there, or the new popular one is a Zoom where everybody could possibly watch.
I have to think about it.
Just options.
My creativity juices are not flowing right now, so I let you guys think about it for some more.
But if you chose to do it that way, I would have no problem with that.
Yeah, I mean, there have been some very successful Zoom meetings, I know Rotary's been meeting Zoom, and it's been very successful.
Right.
I'm not there yet, and I think.
And that's fun.
We use it for church connect groups, like Bible study we do on Wednesdays, we actually, that's what we do, so they, once you learn it, it's, it's a simple system, but the busier they get, the crazier it gets, so it's not a bad option if that's what you want to do, but like for ours, I would like to make sure that we get this done and get them on board, and then that way.
I think that would be such an excellent.
Absolutely, it's, it's a chance to.
And, and this is how we're gonna go about it.
Yes, ma'am, and it's a chance to have questions answered, so that may be an option.
Alright, guys, it is nine eighteen, meeting adjourned?